Good evening, everyone. I would like to call the first meeting in November to order. Madam Clerk, please read the adequate notice compliance statement.
Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided by the City Clerk's Office in preparation of the Council Annual Meeting Notice dated December 15, 2022, which was properly distributed and posted per statutory requirements. Please be advised that fire exits are to my right, your left, and at the back of the room.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Ms. Allen, here. Ms. Fox?
Here.
Ms. Hamlet?
Here.
Dr. Levine?
Here.
Mr. Miniger?
Aye.
Ms. Sank?
Here.
Mr. Vartan?
Present. Okay. And the Pledge of Allegiance.
Aye. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Madam Clerk, please read the explanatory notes regarding closed session and hearings and comments.
A closed-session meeting as authorized by state statute was announced and held prior to the start of this meeting, and the known items for discussion were listed on the published closed-session agenda. Please be advised that council meetings are broadcast live on Comcast Channel 36 and Verizon Channel 30, and rebroadcast on Thursdays and Saturdays on HTV on Comcast 36 and Verizon 33. When invited to speak, please come to the lectern, clearly state your name and address, spell your last name, and speak into the podium microphone so that your comments can be understood by all and properly recorded. Whenever an audience or council member reads from a prepared statement, please give her email a copy to the City Clerk's Office at cityclerk@cityofsummit.org. To help facilitate an orderly meeting and to permit all to be heard, speakers are asked to limit their comments to approximately three minutes or so in length. Unless you're using an electronic device to follow the meeting agenda, or needed for professional emergency contact purposes, please turn it off. Thank you.
Thank you. We will now move on to approval of the minutes. This is for the regular enclosed-session minutes of both the October 3 and October 17 council meetings. Do I have a motion to approve those minutes?
So moved.
Council President, I just made a quick recommendation for a change to the clerk on the minutes of the 17th about the use of ALPRs, just to clarify something that was on there.
Okay.
Okay.
So I guess I'll entertain a motion to approve as amended.
I have a question. Can we just say what that was?
Yes, it said that ALPRs were used primarily for silver and amber alerts, and I think that was, they're used also for that, but not primarily for that.
Okay.
Just to clarify.
Makes sense.
Yep.
So moved.
And do I have a second?
Second.
Excellent. Thank you. All right. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Okay, the motion carries. The minutes are approved. Moving on to reports. Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Council President. A couple things first, and then something I want to share. So early voting for the November general election continues through Sunday, November 5 at specified locations throughout Union County. The closest to us is in New Providence at the De Corso Community Center on 15 East Fourth Street. The center is open today through Saturday, November 4 from 10:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m., and also on Sunday, November 5 from 10:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. You can get more information about this on ucnj.org. Secondly, I'm speaking with Superintendent Huff at the Board Office. As you may have noticed, there's fencing around the high school. So just to let you know, they have started the construction on the high school, the library, and also the middle school. They're expecting, hoping that this will be done by sometime in September of 2024. Construction will not be starting before 8 o'clock in the morning. A month ago, letters were sent to surrounding neighbors, not just within 200 feet, but further away, so that they would know what's going on, because not everybody who's in the neighborhood has kids in the schools. And then lastly, they set up a email site, email address specifically for anybody in the neighborhood who has problems with something that's going on in the construction, and all this is going to be on the city's website tomorrow, and my Facebook page. It's construction@summit.k12.nj.us. So they're trying to be, you know, forward-thinking and try to, any issues, and issues come up with construction all the time, as we know. So hopefully that'll be useful, and it'll be a wonderful addition to their schools. On a more serious note, it has been very disheartening for me as your mayor to witness the pervasive divisiveness this campaign season. Such behavior, no matter who it comes from or from which side it targets, or which side it targets, it is detrimental to the spirit of our community and our democratic process. It only serves to deepen divisions and distract us from the real issues and concerns facing our community. The political environment has become toxic, not just in Summit, but throughout the country. There is vicious name-calling, insinuations of racism, and divisive tactics that do not reflect the values we cherish or civil debate. Speaking on behalf of our fellow residents, stop. We are tired of this behavior. I cannot tell you how many people have emailed me, called me, and stopped me on the street to say, "What's going on? Can't you do something about this?" And personally, I know I can speak here and speak to the community, and I can tell people what I think, but I can't physically stop it. Everybody has to take responsibility. It's equally important to ensure that we do not judge an entire group or party based on the actions of one or a few individuals. Painting broad strokes only perpetuates further misunderstanding and animosity. I call on all residents, supporters, and candidates from all parties to approach the final days until Election Day on November 7 with a renewed commitment to civility, understanding, and respect for one another. We're neighbors. We all want to live here for the same reason. We want safety. We want good schools. We want camaraderie. So let's focus on the ideas and policies that can drive Summit forward rather than succumb to the lowest common denominators of political discourse. Thank you.
Thank you. Administrator Rogers.
Thank you, Council President. Good evening, everyone. Just three items. Extension of parking permit deadline. The City of Summit Parking Services Agency is extending the deadline for resident parking and transfer station permit renewals to November 30, 2023. Permits are required by the City of Summit for residents to park in municipal parking lots and garages and to use our municipal transfer station. For more information or assistance with permit renewal, please contact Parking Services, the Parking Services Agency at 908-522-5100, or email parking@cityofsummit.org. Appointments are available Monday to Friday from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. for residents in need of immediate assistance or without internet access. Flu clinics. The Westfield Regional Health Department is hosting additional free flu and COVID-19 vaccine clinics for non-insured and underinsured residents. No appointment necessary. Clinics will be held in Westfield at 425 East Broad Street from 4:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m. on Thursday, November 2 and Friday, November 3, as well as Wednesday, November 8 and Thursday, November 9. And finally, curbside leaf collection. Just a reminder, curbside leaf collection is ongoing and continues through Friday, December 1, or our first major snowfall on your regular household trash pickup day. More information is available on our city website. And that's it for this evening. Council President, thank you.
Thank you. Michael, I have three things for my report. First, I was saddened to hear of the passing of Reverend Kay Locke, the chaplain of the Summit Volunteer First Aid Squad, and the mother of Fire Battalion Chief Rick Locke. Arrangements, from what I understand, are forthcoming in the next couple of days. I would also like to say thanks to the Summit Fire Department for their quick response to my parents' house earlier this evening for a natural gas regulator issue. Everything is all right. Thank you very much. The only other thing I have to say in my report is that this is the last council meeting before the election. Tensions are high, but I would like to remind everyone in attendance and all those watching that the purpose of this meeting is to conduct the critically important business of the city. Our actions this evening are being conducted in our capacity as elected officials and are critically important in order to keep our government functioning. This is not a place for partisan politics or campaign speeches. Thank you. All right, moving on. We have several resolutions from the Finance Committee, and we will kick it off with you, Council Member Miniger.
Thank you, Council President. This is number 10714, and this resolution authorizes the transfer of appropriations in the operating budget from accounts with a surplus to those that are over. This is a regular occurrence in the last two months and first three months of the fiscal year, and this particular set of transfers totals $153,177. I move to adopt this resolution.
My second.
Okay. Comments, members of council. Comments, members of the public. We have a roll call vote on this one, please.
Ms. Allen?
Aye.
Ms. Fox?
Aye.
Ms. Hamlet?
Aye.
Dr. Levine?
Aye.
Mr. Miniger?
Aye.
Ms. Sank?
Aye.
Mr. Vartan?
Aye. The motion carries. On to the next one. Council Member Miniger.
Thank you, Council President. This is number 10712, and this resolution does two things. It certifies the accuracy of the information provided in this year's New Jersey Best Practices Inventory, and it certifies that this best practice inventory was discussed in a public meeting, which we're doing right now. A few things about this NJ Best Practices Inventory. It provides a checklist of items that municipalities can aim to achieve to help improve everything from environmental sustainability to financial accountability and transparency. The Best Practices Inventory is part of what goes into evaluating municipalities to receive money from two state programs. Summit did very well on this inventory, which is consistent with how we've done in past years as well. Summit has adopted most of these best practices, and we once again scored well above the minimum to receive full state aid. Thank you to CFO Tammy Baldwin and her team for their work on this checklist. I move to adopt this resolution.
My second.
Comments, members of council. Comments, members of the public. I'll just add my thanks to you, Tammy. We go, we get a lot more points than we need, and that ensures we get all the state aid that we can, and that's just the best you can hope for. So all those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? The motion carries. Thank you very much. On to the next one. Council Member Miniger.
Thank you, Council President. This is number 10757, and this resolution authorizes a one-year agreement with Hawkins, Dellafield, and Wood LLP for our bond council services for 2024, not to exceed $60,000. Specialists in this area of municipal bond law, their services include providing assistance with preparing our capital bond ordinances, the financing of those ordinances through the issuance of notes and bonds, and for continuing disclosure requirements. The city has been very happy with their services, and so I move to adopt this resolution.
My second.
Okay. Comments, members of council.
I have a few questions.
Sure.
So what is the, right now, what's the note fee on this? What is the note fee? What's the fee on the note? Like, are we?
We're retaining our bond council.
I understand, but in the details of this, I want to understand, what is the note fee?
Oh, does he charge a note, a fee for notes?
Correct. What's the note fee?
There's an hourly rate.
No, that's separate. I actually have a question on that as well, but what's the note fee? So there's going to be a rate for each note. So for example, to give you an example, right, if the bond is valued at $1,000, if you're looking at a $5 million bond, you divide that by 1,000, so the bond would, the bond cost would be 5,000. The attorney would get 50 cents of that 5,000, which would be 2,500. So my question is, can we eliminate, the reason I'm asking that question is, can we eliminate the flat fee and go to a specific rate? If not, why?
Michael.
This has been a pretty standard contract arrangement, and this is, if you look at bond council agreements, this is typically how it's set up. We're not, this is anything unique. This has been pretty consistent. To answer your question about the, what we charge, it's the 3,500 plus the $1.
So the note fee is $1?
$1 per every $1,000 of bonds approved.
Okay. Well, I think, have we tried to negotiate with them?
I think that considering that we've used this firm for at least the nine years I've been here, plus it has to go back 10 years, I think the value of their services are worth, and it is well within line of what a typical bond council, the way they structure it. Some actually are higher, I've seen, so I think it's a very reasonable arrangement. Also, just for the level of competency we receive from Bob.
So do we have to make this decision tonight, or can we try to negotiate further? Because when I look at his contracts, it looks like he's, or this firm, I should say, it looks like we could potentially get them down to 85 cents.
I don't know what the base.
I'm just saying, like, do we have to do this tonight, or can we think about it and try to negotiate more?
We don't have to do it tonight, to answer your question. But I would like to see examples of what you're talking about.
I'd be happy to do that. My next question, is there hourly rate? It seems like if it's more than $220 an hour, it would be too high. Can we ask for a blended rate? So that would mean if we had a professional that was a principal at $800 or an associate at $150, if the firm incurred 40 billable hours, it would be a rate of 220 hours. That would be my second question.
You can negotiate whatever you need to negotiate.
And I, Michael, we speak 14 times a day. I just came up with this one tonight at 5:00, so it's not that, this is just something that I just got late to the council package.
I would like to see what you're looking at as a comparison before we.
Fair enough.
Anything is negotiated, so.
Is it, would it be amenable for just to have another discussion, or is it a time-sensitive topic? I don't know. This is my question. I think it would be worth negotiating further.
The reality is, it's not. We typically, I think it's just on a cycle of when we are usually putting these services, service contracts up for council.
I'd like to see us take another look at it if we can. I'm not saying it's wrong. I'm just saying I'd like to take another, and Andy, I didn't look at this, I swear, till 5:00 tonight, so I'm not, I really didn't look at it until 11 hours, and I typically try to get to everybody ahead of time, but I did look at it, and I think it would be worth maybe negotiating and saving the city a little bit of money if we can.
Well, Marjorie.
I'm a little confused, because it says here that the hourly rates are $180 for a partner and $125 for associates. Those are pretty low by.
They're very low.
But no, if you look in the other part, Marjorie.
What other part?
If you look at, sorry, so it's more for the, sorry, my eyes. Bond and other capital ordinances should be billed on the basis of $400 per ordinance. Prepared or reviewed multipurpose ordinance shall be billed at $750. Issues for notes in anticipation of the issuance of bonds shall be charged, a charge of $50 per $100,000, and it goes on and on. But I think that's where I was sort of like, should we look at a blended rate?
But a blended rate of what? Because the.
The professional service fees.
But the professional service fees are, those hourly rates are way below that, what they would charge anyone other than a municipality.
I'm not a lawyer. I'm just asking, can we take another look at it?
But I don't know what you're reading is part of the problem. What are you reading from when you say this?
Yeah, but what I, what I'm requesting is just, what are you looking at and what are you comparing it to?
Sure.
So I just want to see.
I'm just, yeah, if we had to do it tonight, then I think I'm probably for it.
It's on the agenda. That's the council's decision of whether they want to move it or not.
I mean, I mean, my thought is, my thought is, we, I'm comfortable with this agreement because we've had this agreement with, with this specific firm, which I have been happy with and which I have been impressed with before. You know, this is the kind of thing where I think if we can have a discussion much earlier in the process, we can get it, we can get it, you know, we can, we can potentially decide if we're going to pull something from an agenda, you know, but we're here now.
I just didn't get a chance to look at it, honestly.
Michael, what are your?
I think this is a very fair arrangement.
Yeah.
Contractual arrangement.
Okay.
And it's been very similar for many, many years. So I just, I mean, to go back, nothing may happen. I'm not saying that you can negotiate, but I think this could have been done before we put this.
I will say this. I had three children with strep throat in the last seven days, and when I say, in all sincerity, I just didn't get to look at it until today. I just didn't.
Well, you know, yeah. I would like to pause this, because I did talk to Delia in another capacity, excuse me, Council, Council Member Hamlet, in parking services and community programs.
It was a rough week.
So if we can, if we can postpone it, it's complete, as long as it doesn't.
So I think what we're looking for is a motion to.
Thanks, Andy.
Table?
Table.
Is that what we're looking for?
So I propose a motion to table.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
All right. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor? Aye.
Thank you, Councilman Miniger.
Motion carries. All right. So we'll do that next meeting, and let's connect on, you know, what we're talking about here specifically. Okay. Good. Number four. Council Member Miniger.
Thank you, Council President. This is number 10756, and this resolution authorizes a two-year contract extension with Sal Electric Company Incorporated for on-call electrical services, not to exceed $40,000 per calendar year. This is for unexpected or emergency electrical work to be performed across various city departments. This extends the contract using the same terms and conditions through December 31, 2025, and I move to adopt this resolution.
My second.
Okay. Comments, members of council. Comments, members of the public. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Next up, last one, Council Member Miniger.
Thank you, Council President. This is number 10769, and this resolution authorizes a one-year contract with Wildcots and Company LLC for audit, budget, and financial services, as well as some note slash bond sale services. This contract is not to exceed 76,000. This extends the contract using the same terms and conditions through December 31, 2025, and I move to adopt this resolution.
My second.
Okay. Comments, members of council.
I guess I just have one question. So this is the same company that we've used last year? Is that the same one?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Comments, members of the public. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. And moving on to safety and health, Council Member Fox.
Thank you, Council President. The first one is ID number 10765, and this is a resolution to award the bid for 2024 and 2025 animal control services to Animal Control Solutions. And the bid for 2024 services is $58,092 plus additional fees for services rendered, and it's in a not-to-exceed amount of $70,100. And for 2025, it's for $61,572 plus additional fees for services, and again, a not-to-exceed amount of $73,500. The vendor also has agreed to consider another two-year extension, so I move to adopt this resolution.
And do we have a second?
That would be you, Councilmember Sank.
Do we have a second?
I'm sorry.
You're, yeah, you're the second.
I'll second.
Thank you. Okay. Comments, members of council.
I just have a couple of questions.
Yeah.
Councilmember Fox, can you just tell me how many calls we had for 20, if you don't know right now, it's not a big deal. I remember we had these numbers, 22. So how many calls per year? I still think this number seems really high. I guess we can't negotiate.
We got one, it's a bid.
One bid.
It's one bid.
So we get one bid. This is it? Okay.
Exactly. And I don't know how many, because.
Yeah, no, that's okay. If we only have one bid, that's it is what it is.
Yes.
Yep. Is there any way we can, nothing we can do? The municipal government's just, there's one bid. We can't, like, what about a public company? Like, this is, like, so we're tied to this just because we have one bid. It just seems really high.
That's.
I guess it is what it is.
That's based on, but here's, here's what I do know. They, they had a contract with us for, from 2020 to 2023. Basically, a flat rate that was what they provided 2020, 2021. We did one-year renewals. It stayed the same. So they've been doing this for four years, and it's been at the same rate. So this is, I think, a reasonable given what we've seen, and we all know, in our flaccidary time, this is not unreasonable, but there is nothing to negotiate. This is done for a bid.
No problem.
Okay.
Council President, can I just ask a curious question? Kind of to that point, when we had a rabid fox, I mean, is there a way to peel out? I'm just curious, because I would think it would take some expense and time to find the fox and to put, you know, so this is, it would fall under this, correct?
No. That one was a police matter.
Police were involved, but normally, that's wildlife, like, certain, certainly bear, you have to contact New Jersey Division of Fish and Wildlife, like, there are certain things. This wouldn't necessarily be covered under that.
Okay.
It's your domesticated animals that you're dealing with mainly.
Got it. Like deer? No dogs.
Yeah, dogs, cats. There might be some others.
You have a domesticated deer. I thought we talked about deer being in part of this.
They are domesticated.
I thought, I thought deer were under this.
It might be, except they might be able to pick them, yeah. But not bear or fox or things like that.
Okay. Good question, though.
Okay. Other comments? Comments, members of the public. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? The motion carries. Next one, Councilmember Fox.
Thank you, Council President. This is ID 10779, and it's to confirm the mayor's appointment to the Board of Health. We discussed in closed session to confirm the mayor's appointment of Amita Kumar to the Board of Health. We've had, she is very, very qualified, and we're very pleased that she's applied, and this will allow us to make sure that the Board of Health is able to, to have a quorum so they can conduct their business. So I move this resolution for approval.
And do we have a second?
Second.
Excellent. Comments, members of council.
I have a comment.
Yeah.
I think she will bring a lot of expertise and enthusiasm, and I am very glad that she's been appointed to this role. Amita, if you're watching, congratulations and welcome, and thanks for stepping up.
Other comments? Comments, members of the public. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. And we have a couple from community programs and parking services, but I think we're going to bundle them together into one. So Councilmember Hamlet.
Thank you, Council President. These are Resolutions 10733 and 10794. Let me just double-check those numbers. Rosie, is that right?
10773.
Right. Right, 10773 and 10794, got it. Purpose of these resolutions are to declare two vacancies in parking services. One is a parking service clerk and also a staff assistant. Now, we have discussed this in closed session, uh, prior to this meeting tonight, and I would like to move this resolution.
And do we have a second?
Oh, a second.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. All right, uh, comments from members of council? Comments from members of the public? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motions carry. Excellent. We have one from Capital Projects and Community Services. Councilmember Livy.
Thank you, Council President. As discussed in closed session, Resolution Number 10725 declares a vacancy in the Roads Unit, which is a crucial position and needs to be filled, and this vacancy arose when an, an employee was promoted. I move to adopt this resolution.
I second.
Okay, comments from members of council? Comments from members of the public? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. And we're on to the consent agenda. I will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
And a second? A second. Okay, any discussion on the consent agenda? Okay, comments from members of the public? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. The consent agenda is approved. All right, we're on to the public comment section of the meeting. A reminder again about my council president's report, which was not that long ago, but this is not a campaign meeting. Please keep partisan politics and campaigning out of this meeting. Couple council meetings ago, I was reminded by Reverend Harriel, uh, sometimes called the conscience of Summit, that I have the responsibility of asserting authority to keep things from getting out of hand. Uh, I will heed his advice, uh, and urge everyone to remind, uh, to be reminded of the, how the comments are conducted. Three minutes per person, please. Please ask your questions up front, and please sit down after your comment. If we can answer your question, we will, uh, but this is not gonna be a big back-and-forth. If it requires follow-up, it will be referred to the appropriate department or committee, and you will receive a response. Okay? Thanks.
Yes, good evening, Mayor Rades, Council President, Fartan, Mayor of Common Council. I'm Jim Bennett, B-E-N-N-E-T, 38 Fairview Avenue. I understand that the action in lieu of prerogative writ that was filed in Superior Court, Union County, by Broad Street West Managers LLC is a legal matter that you're discussing in closed session, and you're somewhat limited in the comments that you can give me tonight. I did check a day or so ago with the Civil Division Manager of the Superior Court and learned that nothing has been filed in this case since the complaint, uh, because, and because of time for filing, uh, the answer has lapsed. I presume there's an agreement with, uh, the, uh, Sills-Cumus attorney not to default the city, and I was wondering if anyone can tell me if, uh, my assumption's correct? What, uh, my second question is, can anyone tell me, uh, what council's representing the city in this matter?
Well, I can do the second one, which is, uh, Scrivo, Tom Scrivo, of Scrivo and O'Toole, uh, who we retained at the two council meetings ago, correct?
Okay.
Um, and then I would have to... I missed the first question. We, we can't get into that.
Yeah, I wasn't clear on what you were asking on the...
Yeah, if there's been an agreement, uh, not to default the city, since, uh, uh, this, my information is that no answer has been filed with complaint.
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
No an, no complaint was filed?
No complaint.
It was an action in lieu of...
It was not served. It was not served, that's what I...
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, not served. Thank you for the correction. I hope the matter can be settled for whatever happens for a very low amount, and if settlement negotiations fail, um, I hope the litigation can be put out of its misery by a motion for summary judgment. Now, um, if a motion for summary judgment becomes our path, I'd like to make a suggestion. And, uh, one, uh, paragraph of the complaint, and this may be, uh, integral to the complaint, it may be dictum, I don't know, is, uh, Broad Street West Management's proposal was greeted with enthusiasm by the city and its residents. Again, dictum, um, or integral to the complaint, I don't know, but, uh, I'd like to point out that 2,000 residents signed a petition to end the Broad Street West redevelopment, and if council, uh, could develop a list of factual issues supporting such a motion, uh, I could ask Amy DeCibio to send out a call to assistance to the, uh, participants and residents for Summit, and we could ask respondents to state the factual matters that they might be able to address. And then we could have council interview respondents to prepare certifications, and hopefully that strength would, step would strengthen any motion for summary judgment. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
Good evening, Claire Toth, 11 Sunset Drive. Um, one item jumped out in the best practices audit. It was the response to what is the biggest hurdle to implementing shared services. Basically insufficient staffing. Um, we know that our city staff is as lean as the capital budget. And as a city, as council, as community members, we ask an awful lot of city staff. When I've dealt with anyone as a citizen, as a volunteer, I've never, every single staff member has been gracious, has been professional, has been overly generous with his or her time. And I think as a community, we need to do a better job of supporting and appreciating the fabulous staff that our city has, and I just urge council and all of us to get creative in ways to do that. Thank you.
Thank you. All right.
Hi, uh, Dave Gale, Parkview Terrace. I don't have anything prepared to hand in, but I'm certainly happy to, uh, send an email with it. There was just, uh, two things. One, I was going to, uh, we know, uh, one of the firemen in town, um, so he had suggested emailing the Chief of the Fire Department, but, uh, I figured, given that the council meeting was tonight, um, I could speak to this. A couple weeks ago, uh, we turned on our heat for the first time. Being first-time homeowners, I'm sure there was some sort of precaution we could've taken, but our boiler made a sound that was beyond what, it put some fear, it put, put the fear of God in me, uh, and my wife, and we have a one-year-old, who slept through it, thankfully. But we didn't know who to call. We were trying to call, uh, a plumber, couldn't get ahold of somebody, so our next thought was, why don't we call the Summit Fire Department? Just said, look, here's the situation. We went down, turned the burner off, but we're not touching anything with gas, we don't smell anything, but, look, we just wanna make sure we don't have a fire hazard in the house. They told us they were gonna send somebody to our house. We thought maybe one person would show up, take a look. The entire, entire department came, trucks and all, on a Sunday night, our neighbors came out. But I guess, you know, I, I, I can tell you that my wife and I were nothing but just flattered and just so happy that we have a fire department that took no, you know, they were not gonna take any chance at all to make sure that there wasn't a hazard. They did everything from shut off the gas, told us what we did was right, they scanned our whole home to see if there's any natural gas leaks. I can tell you, it gave both my wife and I a tremendous amount of peace of mind, knowing we had a little one sleeping, and she still slept even through the whole thing with, uh, the fire department in the house, and our dog trying to say hello to all of them, so just as a matter of public record, I wanted to come on and just say thank you to our Summit Fire Department. Uh, we are so grateful to have those types of services in our town, and, um, yeah, we're just so grateful. Mayor, your comments, uh, earlier today kind of actually gave me, you know, it kind of echoed a little bit of a thought that I had, and it reminded me of a, uh, there was, I don't know if it still exists, but there was a podcast in the Washington Post called The Daily 202, and at the time, uh, one of the writers compared a lot of what was happening, uh, in our country to baseball, so I just wanted to share, uh, a couple of quotes from that, um, especially with, with elections, election season. Uh, one of the quotes from there, um, "With so many reasons to worry that the center may not hold in American life," and obviously in spirit of the fact that it's the World Series tonight, um, "baseball steps into the breach. If you're ever losing faith in this country, go to a game. It may cure you. The national pastime reminds us that there's nothing wrong with America that can't be fixed by what's right about America." And lastly, and I, you know, with the help of my wife, did a little bit of improvisation, and, but, uh, you know, but baseball is like election season. The season can be a grind, but it's fun and worthwhile. Even the most elite athletes only get a hit like a third of the time, but they keep swinging. As Babe Ruth said, "Winners never let the fear of striking out keeping them from playing." And from Tommy Lasorda, "No matter how good you are, you're going to lose 1/30 of your games. No matter how bad you are, you're going to win 1/30 of your games. It's the other third that makes the difference." Thank you for your time.
Thank you, and thank you for your comments about the fire department, because they are great, and they are always out there in force, because they are just so incredibly careful. I'm sorry the chief left, and before he could be able to hear this, but I will share it with him, of course.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that we just said, thank you.
And welcome to Summit.
May I make a comment, Greg? Um, I just wanted to say, uh, Dave, you know, I don't know if you're a Republican or a Democrat, and I, you're obviously a first, uh, you know, new resident, but, um, it takes a lot of courage to get up and say what you said tonight, and I think all of us could use, uh, that, that talk, so we should all put that on YouTube, and, um, very powerful. And obviously, the police department is superb, and thank you for saying that, but, uh, your comments and your courage for getting up here and saying that are very, very powerful. And again, I don't know if you're a Democrat or a Republican, but I think that brings us all together, and that, that, well done.
Thank you. Really appreciate your time.
Thanks.
Okay.
Jamel Boyer, 204 Morris Avenue. Mayor, council president, council members. Over the weekend, uh, me and my running mates dressed up in costumes handed out candy to a bunch of kids, uh, with the PAL. And then later on that, that evening, someone put on social media, typecasting us, and I was typecasted as brainless. My children, my wife, you know, they see these things, and it wasn't just that, it's the constant social media bullying that I've experienced since February. Relentless, "Why are you a Republican? You should be able to read a history book." The other day, we woke up on a Monday to our lawn signs thrown out in the middle of the street, behind the bushes, and frankly, I thought I was immune to a lot of this political stuff, because I grew up in this town. Didn't matter if you were a Republican, or a Democrat, or a liberal. I grew up here. I have friends here. We never even asked what political affiliation you were, but the look on my wife and children's faces broke my heart, and I asked the residents of Summit, "What town is this? Is this Summit?" And I asked the residents of Summit to come out and condone this, and they did, and it reminded me of a town that is beautiful, that is humane, and that is loving. It also reminded me of a conversation I had in a dream before I decided to run, because it's not popular being a Republican. I asked the Lord, "Should I do this?" And the Lord told me that if you are willing to put yourself on the line and be crucified by your political beliefs, then I am willing to resurrect you, to bring back decency and humanity to this town. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
Good evening, my name is Richard Ford, Constantine Place. I want to speak tonight and hopefully better understand the process the city council and governing body has in place around conflicts of interest. I believe it is important for the community to understand the policy and steps taken to ensure that conflicts of interest are reported and vetted. I have followed council meetings and also candidates running for mayor, and I cannot figure out if and what the process and who holds the responsibility to report if there is oversight, et cetera. And I hope that you can explain tonight and also point us to the policies that are in place by the city to avoid them and protect the governing body against recourse and conflicts that are not reported or adhered to. In doing so, I ask that you please touch on whether reporting conflicts of interest are intrigued to, intended to rest solely on the individual. For example, example, Dr. Levine recused herself from a vote on a crosswalk by the Arboretum, which is, which she holds a directorship position earlier this year. Was it on her self-report, or does the city have further policies and checks in place to ensure all conflicts are proactively reported? Also, I ask that you please touch on recourse when conflicts are not disclosed. If someone fails to disclose a conflict of interest, what's the recourse? Who decides what the recourse is? I sent an email on October 20th to Greg Barton, Jamie Levine, Delia Hamlet, Marjorie Fox, Lisa Allen, Phyllis Sank, Andy Miniger, Michael Rogers, Rosemary Licatise, and Nicole Cotiga. When researching for candidates for mayor, I became concerned about potential conflicts of interest related to David Naidoo, who was then council president, and leading efforts on Broad Street West Steering Committee to negotiate a financial real estate development deal with Toll Brothers, Inc., and L&amp;M Development Partners. My concern is that while Mr. Naidoo's day job at K&amp;L Gates also represents, represented Toll Brothers, while Mr. Naidoo was simultaneously negotiating a deal on behalf of the city of Summit with the same entity his firm represents. Given the above examples, the Naidoo multi, multimillion-dollar Toll Brothers deal seems to overshadow the crosswalk example from Dr. Levine earlier in the year as it relates to conflicts of interest. Can you please clarify the process in detail so that myself and the community could better understand? Thank you.
Thank you. I don't think we're gonna be able to do that effectively this evening, so we're gonna have to follow up with you on that.
I just have a question. He sent that email on, I forget when, is, is there a specific timeframe in which we have to answer him?
Well, there's gonna be certain parts of that that we're not gonna be able to address, because they're political in nature, and we're not gonna be using city resources to be answering questions that are political in nature.
I don't think they're political. Let's, hold on, let's take a second.
They were specifically...
They're not political. He's asking about oversight.
So, Delia...
He's asking about oversight. Can I give you an example?
So, I'm gonna finish what I'm saying first, and then, so, first is, the first part of what he was asking this evening, which I think we have a copy of, right? We will have Michael, and we will have our city solicitor review, and if there's responses that we can give, that will be followed up on. The second part, that is completely political, we are not gonna address. That's, that's where we are.
I'm saying I think it's probably not appropriate to address that, but I do think with oversight, as far as conflicts...
Yes, absolutely.
I mean, to give the public an example, I have a permit outstanding for a split air conditioner system, and I have to, as a councilperson, I have to get that approved through Milburn. So I call Milburn, and I say, "Approve my permit." And they say, "Oh, gosh, well, you know what? I can't approve your permit either, because we share the same building expector." All of these things are really important for the public to understand. I have to get my permit approved now through, I think, Cranford or something, but all of these things are really important for the public. It's a $6,000, and I didn't know. I didn't know any of that.
Right, but I think Michael and counsel will look at it, not council, meaning, but our solicitor. We'll, we'll look at it and definitely get back to Mr. Ford.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
David Naidoo, 100 West End Avenue. I just heard Jamel Boyer speak about personal attacks, and what followed after that? A personal attack on my ethics. Now, I find that very interesting. I think most people hearing that would also find it interesting. Mr. Boyer also went on to speak about the destruction of lawn signs. I had spoken about the destruction of lawn signs. In fact, I spoke about that a few years ago, and for that, I was mocked and ridiculed by my opponents, including now in a digital ad, where they say, "Oh, David Naidoo cares more about lawn signs than he does about safety," which is absolutely wrong. Frankly, what I was defending, and what Mr. Boyer was clearly referring to, was the right of free speech, the right guaranteed under the Constitution, the right that people have to express their opinion without fear. And that's what Mr. Boyer was upset about, that his right, that his family's right was being taken away. But it seems that his colleagues and his running mates don't respect his rights as much as I do, because they're willing to trash my record about defending his rights. That's what leadership is about, not defending only things that when it's of your particular interest, but when it is for the betterment of the community. Let me address Mr. Ford and his ridiculous charge of any ethical violation. Frankly, it's insulting, and the reason it's insulting is that I'm a partner, just as Mr. Palowski is in the same law firm. Mr. Palowski and I are in the same law firm. He's have, doesn't happen to be a partner, I do. Fact of the matter is, we are a law firm with 1,800 lawyers plus worldwide, with 45 offices. We have tens of thousands of clients, and those clients are involved in a whole set of issues. I had nothing ever to do with Toll Brothers. I used to recuse myself when there was paving on my street. I recused myself when it dealt with any nonprofit that I was involved in. If I for one second thought that it was necessary or appropriate to recuse myself, I would have. I did work on Broad Street West along with all the other members of council and the mayor and city staff for the betterment of this community. You may disagree with it, but there was nothing that any of us did to benefit the developer in any sort of way. We all looked at our fiduciary duty to the city, and we did it. So I think where we've come, as Mr. Boyer said, is really about the state of the politics in this town, and that is to say that we really are better than this. We really are. I didn't, unfortunately, I did not hear the mayor's comments, because I had to be with my son, but let me say this. I have walked this town multiple times, met thousands and thousands of residents, and really, they expect better from us in a political debate. They really do, and they deserve it. Okay? We have people who have real issues going on.
I'll ask you to wrap up, please.
Thank you, I will. They have real issues going on, and we, those of you who serve, who have the honor of serving, when I had the honor of serving, one of seven members of this body to be able to help them, that's what we should focus on.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Diego Coig. I live on Argyle Court. On the evening of October 21st, lawn signs supporting me and my running mates were also vandalized. This was two days after... This was two days after representatives who did not support the choice of speaker were being threatened. I felt very threatened. As a matter of fact, so threatened that on October 23rd, I filed a police report. The intent of this police report was not to make it political, it was simply to establish a record in case there was any violence coming my way. As a matter of fact, I have no idea what the number on the police report is. It was filed with Officer Sowers and Rosie, perhaps you can actually get this police report from the from the police department entered into the record. But it was not just my lawn signs and my running mates, the lawn signs supporting my running mates on my property that were vandalized. My neighbor across the street, his lawn signs were vandalized as well. And two other houses on Springfield Avenue that had our lawn signs were also vandalized, four houses. How do I know they were vandalized? As I told Officer Sowers at the time, the lawn sign was here, the metal was on the, was on the ground. And in order to rip a lawn sign, you need to have what? A sail, you got the wind, that could happen, it could topple it. But it cannot separate the two pieces of the lawn sign. The metal was in one place, the lawn sign was another place. One of my strong supporters who lives in one of the premier streets in North Summit was the one who alerted me to the lawn signs being blown away. And when I went to show him the pictures, just to tell him, "Look, this is what's happening, but I'm not going to say anything because the temperature in the city is hot enough," he pointed out that he saw somebody walk with their son. And when their son kicked my lawn sign, this person encouraged their son to kick it again. I have knocked on a street, on a house, also in North Summit, where the resident called me, "Hello, expletive, you." And if he could shoot the US president, he would. And I have a witness of this. Because I was always canvassing with another person. So clearly, we have a breakdown in civility. Clearly, we need to have better debate. Clearly, this is inappropriate. Now, the person who used an expletive to welcome me at their home has, of course, a first-minute right to say whatever they want.
I'll ask you to wrap up, please.
Yeah. But as Mr. Naidoo said, when you vandalize a lawn sign, you vandalize a First Amendment right. The First Amendment is in the Constitution. Theft is not in the Constitution. The Constitution, for those of us who have passed the citizenship exam, is the supreme law of the land, all other laws are beneath it. We need to protect free speech in Summit.
Please, thank you. All right, I'm going to close the public comment period.
Hi, Erwin Miller, 5 Knob Hill Drive. Sorry about your lawn signs. But there are, everyone's worried about civility, I understand that. For some of you may have seen one of the experts, Scott Galloway, Bill Maher. He also hoped for grace and we should all come together, et cetera, et cetera. We're forgetting what happened a few years ago. I know no one wants to talk about it, no one wants to just move on. But it's a big week coming up and let's all just remember, when push came to shove, the experts who are currently leading us led us down a really bad path and I think that contributed to what we're living with today. The abuse that was placed on children in this town. I know that it wasn't your policy decisions necessarily, though it was the board of education that did make, exacerbated the issue. But it was your leadership that created these policies. It was your leadership that created executive orders to push these policies. It was our local leadership that implemented these policies. So, next time we have an issue, if you want to go down some crazy path masking two-year-olds and forcing untested medication on people to go to school, you want to do that all over again, then, you know, keep it up with the same leadership at the local level, at the state level, federal level, enjoy that. But this is not, this is a serious, serious issue and no one wants to talk about it, no one wants it to go away. But I just want to remind everyone that this happened under the current leadership at the state level and the local level. And I hope that people realize if you're on the fence, and even if you're not on the fence and you remember this, let's make a different choice in the state and in the city. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, good evening, Dory Gagnon. I'm here to talk and address a little bit about accountability. Over the last couple of years, I've had some concerns. We've had Maple Street legally closed where Mr. Rogers apologized for that. We've had this Broad Street West debacle. A couple of things been brought up online. Mr. Naidoo came up and addressed something. But there's also a tax issue where his taxes have been in question. And I'm not specifically going to address him per se, but I'm going to address the process. And when we do something on our home project, if you go for variance, go to the planning board, the tax assessor comes knocking on our door, they reevaluate us, and our taxes go up. Now, for some people in question, they don't go up. However, there has to be some accountability for the town, for who's in charge. And as Ms. Toth said, you know, our staff here is very precious, or they're understaffed. But there's always a process here and I'm always questioning things, like why were both signs in town done when they shouldn't have been done? And why are things being mislooked at? Why is, you know, some, you know, if you're recusing yourself on sidewalks and he's not recusing himself when Toll Brothers is paying his law firm and he is a partner in it and he's getting kickbacks at the end of the year for that? Why isn't someone making sure that things aren't in place here and things aren't looked at properly? So that $60,000 in taxes and coming back to the city to pay for some of that firehouse project that we're doing. So we're not looking for people in the city to help us finance that. Or, you know, there's a lot of people here that are in foreclosure that can't even afford their taxes, that have to put their house for sale. So, there's a lot of mishaps in this city. And I'm sitting here, like, so confused. So, I wonder, is this a council thing? Is everyone here paying their taxes? I'm really scratching my head. Do I have to look at everyone's taxes up on the dais and say, "Does everyone get a freebie?" Or is this new where Ms. Hamlet now has to go to a different city to have an inspector look at? Is that new since Mr. Naidoo was on council? I really am confused and concerned that the city is not doing the proper steps and that we are liable as a city with Broad Street West with that mismanagement and that you guys are being sued that things aren't done properly. And so I'm asking this as a concerned resident that other people now know about what's going on, that the attorney general or someone's going to come in and say that there was cash. And people question this with Broad Street West. Who really has their hands dipping in what? And people said, "No, no, not going to happen." But that's what people are coming back to me asking.
Okay, Dory, I'm going to stop you now.
No, I'm not done.
No, you're at your three minutes now, Dory, so I'm going to stop you now.
I have one at five or 10 in the election.
No, I'm going to stop you, I'm going to stop you now.
I'm just telling you, there's a lot of questions going online and people are asking.
Please stop, I'm going to stop you now because a lot of the things that you've just said would constitute crime, okay?
I understand that, but people are asking.
Dory, stop talking, please, thank you. What you've spoken about just now is crime. And if you have evidence of that, I encourage you to file a police report. Please sit down, thank you. I encourage you to file a police report and contact the prosecutor's office. Now, I'm going to close the public comment period. Come on up, one more.
Helena Levis, 24 Plain Street, Summit. I've been coming to the meetings for about a year now consistently and just sitting and listening. And throughout the year, I have heard people say things about the council throwing shades supposedly when it came to closing Maple Street. I heard someone say, "Well, maybe some of you gained financially from that." A lot of things are thrown out without any evidence, without any proof, just putting it out there. When they said that Mayor Radisson didn't care about crime in the train station, when she's one of the most compassionate people when it comes about crime, homeless people, and everything. And now, once again tonight, shade is thrown on you. Do you pay your taxes, don't you pay your taxes? That is so unfair. People, "Oh, you know what happened last year." Well, no, I don't know what happened last year, what are you talking about? And if you don't say anything specific, don't say anything at all. Because if you're going to accuse people, then accuse someone of something. Don't just throw it out there. You know, "God didn't tell me to come up and say that, I am saying it." I mean, people are saying that God tells them to run for office and all of this. Does that make you any more of a viable candidate than if you just decided to run for office on your own? This is like getting to be crazy. You know, we're all here for one reason, we love Summit, we enjoy living in Summit. And what's happening is, we're starting to ruin it, starting to become like like every place else that we hear in the news, everything we dislike. And I think that we just should think about, this is our home and how would we like our home to be? Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I just say something? I would really, I really would like to thank you. I have been sitting on council for what, less than a month? I am so impressed with the people up here. I thought I knew what council did, but I had no idea. They told me it'll be five meetings, many more that you don't even know about. The integrity, the hard work, the absolute no compensation, the honesty. I'm so impressed with every one of these of my colleagues. I'll only be here till December 31st. But God, when I hear some of the charges that are filed and hands in the pocket and this and that, do you realize, nobody here gets one penny for what they do? They do not get reimbursed one cent for gas, for charitable giving, for showing up at every event in town. There has to be some respect and I really want to thank you as a member of the public for recognizing that. And thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you. Okay, I think now we're going to close the public comment period and we're going to move on to council member comments and new business. Mayor.
I just, I am remiss, I meant when I gave my comments in the opening, just to ask everybody in the room to say prayers and think about the families in Lewiston, Maine who lost 18 loved ones and several others that were injured. So if we could just have a few moments of silence, I'd appreciate it. Thank you very much, I appreciate your indulging me.
Thank you, Mayor. Other council member comments, yes.
I want to welcome Nate, correct? Thank you for coming to your first council meeting. I'm sure it's not an easy one to watch. I think it's been two years since I've been on this council. And it is hard to always bite your tongue and be somebody who doesn't want to say things to inflame our community. And it is an honor to serve and I want to thank Helena. You know, I have watched you over the last couple of years for being here. And to say tonight respectfully that people can't come up and be political, I think that it's, it speaks to the fact that over the last two years, people have felt shut down and that there's a trust issue. And when I was, when I came on, the first thing we were dealing with was gas leak blowers. And people felt engaged about it because they felt as though when it was sprung on the community, they felt like the process didn't feel fair. And when we went through Maple Street, it wasn't that people didn't really want outdoor dining, they felt the process was broken. We had to dig through and find out there wasn't a permit. And that's not fair to the community, it's not right. And with Broad Street West, people had to show up in the hundreds to come to this council and ask us to please just pause. People didn't want to necessarily, there were some people who would get rid of the building entirely, but most people just wanted real facts, they wanted us to be truthful. And they, every turn we took, and I think that we need some healing in this community, in this, on this dais. Every turn we took, they got information that wasn't correct. And they felt deceived. And I'm going to say, like, I think that we owe it to our community to be honest, to be fair. And we can lecture them about civility, but if we don't start first, then we don't deserve their civility. That's my feeling. And we should treat everybody with the same respect. Because I'll tell you, there's been some things that have been said that are so hurtful and inflammatory and bringing in national politics, when you say you don't want national politics, but you still bring it in. And it's really dangerous for people in our community. When we look at what's going on in Israel and Hamas, that's where real hate leads. Louis, you know, Maine, I don't want anyone in our schools to get hurt, I'm a parent too. I don't want any harm to come to one single hair on our children in this, in the entire country, actually. So, people are going to come up and if you don't listen, they get louder and more angry. That's where hate leads, I'm serious, like, I just, so if we really want to heal and we really want to do something good for our community, we'll stop lecturing them. We'll stop telling them that they're wrong for feeling the way they feel. And we should start listening because that's where change happens. So, I'm, that's, I just have to say that, like, I would like to turn a page because when I moved to Summit, I have lots of friends who are Democrats, independents, and Republicans. You know the tragedy on this? Is that I don't think I could do today, if I started out today in politics, there's no way I could have the same circle of friends that I had 10 years ago or 13 years ago. Because politics has become so voli, volatile that our political identities have become far more important to us than the identities of our community, our friends, our, you know, our husbands, our wives. I mean, to say that people should divorce people because their political affiliation, like, come on, guys. We take care, it was posted on Facebook that people should...
Well, I don't look at this.
Yeah, that they should divorce their Republican husbands, it's like, come on. So like...
Those people are idiots who say that.
I know, but my point being is this, is that, and I'll stop, but I have to say this, I just, it's like, you know, we all are accountable. We, it starts here. It starts with us. It does.
I'd like to respond to this. Lisa, when you came on, Lisa, I understand what you're saying, but when you came on council as a new council member and I was council president, I helped you, I worked with you, I, you know, I answered your questions, I reviewed the things you were doing. And then, you know, and I, you know, and I told you that our success was everyone's success, that you, you know, I wanted you to be successful because we were all a team working for the city and working to make this community a better place. And, you know, and I thought we had a level of trust. But it has broken down to the point where you've taken the side of the people who have been the most aggressive in attacking us. When I was council president, I was accused... When I was council president, I was accused of being on the take, of taking money from developers, being in bed with developers. People said it on social media. People came up to the dais and said, you know, to the, you know, they came up to the podium and said that to my face. And, you know, that is, to me, unacceptable. I am a volunteer. I am doing this because I love this city. And, you know, not, I understand that people may not all agree, but for you to take the side of the people who are attacking us, and then for you to later write a letter accusing us of wrongdoing about Maple Street, and then, of course, you apologize privately. You never retracted the letter that you wrote without any basis. I have, you know, I am the first person to say that, you know, I have met with any number of people. I will listen to anyone's views. You know, there was a process, and there was also a process of unwinding Broad Street West. It wasn't that I didn't listen. And, you know, when people say you don't listen, it means you don't do what I want you to do. And that's what it's turned into in this community. And there are, you know, 20 or 30 loud voices saying what I think, you know, there are a lot of quiet people in this community who are upset by what they're seeing and the loud voices and the criticism and the nastiness. And for you to just give license to that, like you just did, you know, Dory just came up and accused us of being on the take and of things, you know, that is disgraceful. And we sit here and we listen to it, week after week, and then you wonder why maybe no one wants to run for council anymore. Because it's not worth it to put our families through that. And, you know, Mr. Boyer's talking about his family. What about the rest of our families who watch these council meetings and see us accused of wrongdoing? I just, you know, I would like everyone to please reel it in and think about the fact that all of us on the dais are people, too. And we, we all are doing the very best we can for the community. And, look, all of the candidates are as well. I, you know, I would, I wish everyone the best. I want everyone to just come together as a community and treat each other as neighbors. And it would be great if we could also see that here without the, you know, the allegations of, and the taking of sides. Okay?
As long as we shut up.
Let's go, let's go to Andy.
So I thought that it was important to talk about trust also, because Broad Street West did have the beginning of it, yeah, sure, people had some loss of trust there. I think when you say that it begins today, Councilmember Allen, I think you're forgetting that we made an awful lot of, a lot of fulfilled promises throughout the ending of this process. So one of them was, we promised that we were going to get out of that agreement. Okay? And there were two weeks or so in between where people had to wait to see if that was going to happen, and man, it happened. And then we had, we talked about getting out of the, getting out of the area in need of redevelopment. And sure enough, we waited, you trusted us on that moment, you took a step, you gave a little bit of, you gave us some grace in that moment, and it absolutely happened. And that is what builds trust. You take, you take a step, when you have doubt, you take a step towards grace, and you hear somebody say, "All right, I'm going to give you the benefit of the doubt for this one time." And if it happens, it happens. That is how trust is built. So to continue to go back and say that we have to start now with trust, no. We had a really, really powerful moment of trust by this body up here. We cannot forget that, and we can't keep denying that's happening. Okay? This is, this is real. What you're seeing is trust happening. This is what a council that does things that they say, that's what it looks like. So please, trust has started here, folks. Do not continue to divide by saying that it's, it's, it's that there's some unfulfilled promises that have been, that lies still exist, unfulfilled promises. No, you've seen them come to fruition. That's it.
Let's go, Jamie.
Sure. Thank you, Council President. I just, I want to acknowledge some of what happens behind the scenes that our neighbors don't always see, but there's a robust committee structure that is in the background that there, you know, there are six council committees, as you know, each of us chairs one and is a member of another. Now, many of those committees are bipartisan, just by the nature of the numbers here, and we spend many, many hours in meetings each week and much behind-the-scenes work and diligence before something is ready to come and be on our agenda and be deliberated on and voted on in public. And I just want to share my experience briefly. I hope you don't mind, Councilmember Allen, but she and I work together, we've worked together now, I guess, on two committees. The first one I chaired, and now the second one she's chairing, which is administrative policies. And I just want to give you a glimpse into how, into the many hours of work we do together. It is productive. It is thoughtful. It is, we do really good work. I don't recall there, I mean, yes, constant challenge and disagreement, but never anything adversarial, never anything political. And this is how, this is what happens and what we do behind the scenes and what we do so well. And we've, and things have come on this agenda that are the product of that excellent work. And that is a lot of what is happening behind the scenes that isn't, that isn't here for all of you to see. And I thought it was just an important commentary to add to the conversation.
Thank you.
First, Marjorie, if it makes you feel any better, I do not think you received any money from Toll Brothers, so I'd like to just say that publicly.
Thank you.
I have no concerns on that front. We've had those conversations. You know, I'd like to say first, Council President Vartan, your words just tonight when you were saying not to make political speeches, of course, we don't want political speeches, but we can't stifle what the community wants. You have your three minutes, and the reason you have that three minutes, and it's so important, is we can't tell you what to say. That's not the right thing. That's why you have your three minutes. Mayor Rades, thank you for your comments tonight. They're very powerful. As a council member, if there is any hate coming out of any group, I will denounce hate immediately, and you will not be associated with me or my values. I hope that leadership will denounce any and all hate groups in Summit, New Jersey. I'd like to have some dialogue right now on a specific group, and I didn't plan on asking this, but I'd like to ask my colleagues if they would specifically denounce what happened to myself and the four candidates, three candidates, how many are there? One, two, can't even keep track, the candidates from Summit marches on this weekend. I couldn't shake it this week, I have to be honest. I know we can't control what someone on a group writes, but I think we need to have a discussion around what we will denounce and what are hate groups. Because as I look forward with my colleague, Ms. Sang, who's done a great job of, we're working on an antisemitism resolution, and she's done a great job looking at different resolutions, which I think are really important, and she's done a great job on that. And one of the things I talked about today with her is where do we draw the line? Because I've been, as a candidate and even now, you know, all of us were tagged as, I was a witch, I think our first potential black councilperson as a man was called brainless. These are really hurtful things. So where do we draw the line at being a part of these groups? And as I look at passing the antisemitism resolution, one of the things that I'm very passionate about is, you know, we put a lot of power in the interfaith council, and I think there's 12 organizations in the interfaith council. And I recommended that we have them all sign that resolution. Because I want to be sure that all members of our interfaith council agree that there will be no antisemitism in Summit, New Jersey. And I think it's really powerful. So I was wondering if we could have some dialogue around what happened with this specific group the last week.
Council President?
Yeah.
At the same time, I would like to have dialogue around some things that we heard in the course of the last year. Because it's just, it's just supporters of us up here or supporters of candidates. I would like eventually for someone to acknowledge that when people call us liars, when we're actually not liars, it is important for people who read that on social media or on YouTube, specifically a finance meeting, a finance YouTube, Facebook Live, actually, when you're called a liar in some of the most mundane kind of Facebook Lives, a finance update, that's a pretty, that's a pretty big deal. If you could please, also, if we're going to do this kind of dialogue, if you could please also denounce that in a very, very public way, and I'm asking for whoever feels that they have, they have the authority to do so, whoever feels that it's important for them to say so, I would love to hear that from you. Thank you very much.
Andy, if anybody calls you a liar, I will definitely address those concerns. I'm just speaking about, and we don't have to have complete dialogue, but I am, you know, I would like to know who, I'm, as an elected official, you know, it was a painful week. And I think we should look at some of these groups who are representing our city committees, and if there's any hate involved with them, I think it's important. Finally, if anybody else has any other comments, a couple other brief notes. I went to the Union County meeting last week and asked about Bryant Pond, and they received one bid for the hydro raking. So potentially, we could start that this fall. We should be receiving an update, hopefully, in the next couple of weeks. And I also asked about the fitness centers at Bryant Parkway there because they are in desperate need of repair. Did get confirmation from Victoria Durbin Drake that they would be able to allocate some funds. So we see a lot of folks working out down there, and hopefully, we'll be able to see an improvement in that. And then we had a meeting on Maybe Playground with the residents, and it was a great meeting, well-done by our Mark and David and the committee there, looking at potential playground dynamics for Maybe Playground. There were some concerns around the noise levels associated with some of the equipment, so Mark and David went out to look at some of the decibel levels, and we'll be reporting back to those residents. So I think that's all I have, but thank you.
Yeah, I was at that meeting, too. It was very, very, for the most part, you know, a couple of complaints, but, or questions, really, but it was mostly very favorably received.
I want to go back for a second. I don't think we should, what I heard in what your comments just now was, we shouldn't be trying to stifle the First Amendment rights of our constituents. But then I heard you say that you want to start down the path of designating local political groups as hate groups, potentially. And that's highly concerning to me, just as a person, but extremely highly concerning to me as a member of council, because I think that's the slippery slope you could go down. Just as a general comment, I think people largely understand that we are often charming and enthusiastic, but cannot, but cannot, in fact, control what people in this community say and do, especially on social media, which is gross. And just as a next comment, I'll just say, for me, having, having run three races, one unsuccessfully, two successfully, all that I believe I can do as a candidate, as a leader here, is model the type of behavior that I would want to see in somebody that I vote for. And that's where I think I want to leave it for now. But that's, I'll leave it there. Thank you.
Council President, I just want to say something, just because a couple of people addressed me. First of all, I want to say thank you. That was really, I appreciate that, because our committee work is nonpartisan, and it's been a pleasure working. To Andy, Councilman Miniger, I don't mean trust starts tonight. I'm saying that I think over the last two years, I've seen a challenge and degradation of trust. And I want to say that I think you showed an enormous amount of grace tonight when you pulled the resolution. I think sometimes we're up here, and when we want to have dialogue, I think that Councilwoman Hamlin and I sometimes feel as though we're not supposed to disagree. And you know what? I just thought what you did tonight, it just de-escalated, and it was fine. And so we can't always get to ask questions ahead of time. We should try to do that, to be efficient, but sometimes that doesn't happen. So thank you, and I think that trust should start every day, any day. So, and I'm sorry, Marjorie, I'm going to just call you Marjorie, because I'm sorry that you feel as though I didn't speak up. So I don't think you took money. I think it was, you know, there were some things I think you did really well up there as president, I have to be honest. You are a very smart woman. I don't always agree with you, you don't always agree with me, right? So I apologize. And the Maple Street thing, I was upset about the permit. We shouldn't have found out about it up here. That's all.
And we all, but the fair thing to acknowledge is that we all found out about it at the same time. You suggested that we looked the other way, and we did not, and that was what upset me, because you didn't have any basis for saying that. And it was, and, you know, it was, you made that statement publicly and then apologized to us privately, but the, you know, but the, you know, but, but the damage was done, and that's what happens, unfortunately. You know, all these suggestions of wrongdoing, even if they turn out to be nothing, this is what people hear and what people believe and remember, and that's what's so upsetting. And I know that wasn't your intention, and I appreciate your apology.
Right. And I think the private apology was that, you know, there's a lot of hard work that goes up here, and I felt frustrated that the process, you know, here we are telling people we're doing everything we're supposed to do, and to find out publicly, we didn't. So I apologize to you and how you felt, but I don't apologize for being frustrated.
We were all frustrated. We were all frustrated. The difference was that we didn't, we didn't write a letter criticizing some of our colleagues for doing something intentionally wrong, and that was what I was upset about.
May I make a comment?
Jamie, I'd ask.
It's a different topic than this, so...
I think we've beaten a dead horse on this one.
May I change the topic briefly? Something has been just sitting not right with me from an earlier topic discussed, and that was regarding, well, number one, I'm so glad the antisemitism resolution is working, being worked through your committee. I've been, as you both know, those of you on the committee, been following up regularly on that. And just to clarify, I believe it's a resolution to define antisemitism, not to stop it, but to define it. And I think that that is apropos to what I was hearing just now. Antisemitism is not just a form of name-calling. They're very different. And that is what was bothering me just for these last few minutes, so I really wanted to just make that distinction. And the fact that we will soon have, hopefully, a definition to discuss and deliberate on, I think will, I think is a good thing for many reasons, but now that we've had this conversation, I think especially important.
I'd like to just comment that we are working on what I would call a full-throated definition of antisemitism, which will be relevant to Summit as well as to surrounding communities, New Jersey and the country. And I've been working with Rabbi Friedman, and he is in touch with the interfaith council, and I hope that they will all be here, as many people as possible who care about this subject on November 13th. I'm very proud to bring it forward. I thank Delia for her support, and just thank you, Jamie, too. And thank all of you, because I understand that all of you are pretty much in support, and I look forward to sharing the resolution with you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just one final comment, Greg, and let everybody go after this, but Lisa, thank you for your comment about Councilmember Miniger, and I think that tonight was a perfect example of what he did. And we're on opposite sides of the political party, but what he did tonight was the right thing. And by slowing that process down, Andy, well done, and thank you. And that's the way it should be up here. That's the way it should be.
You're welcome.
And then finally, I would say, in regards to Maple Street, and I would look to you, Administrator Rogers, the buck stops with you on these things, and you're a friend, you're a colleague, but when we don't have things like permits and stuff, that's not our job. It's your department's job, and we need these confirmations for studies for anything, because I know personally, I don't have the time to check all of that stuff. So I would ask for your support. And Rosie, I think just adding all this stuff to the packet has been really helpful, so I think we're on a much better path, and I thank you for all your hard work with everything.
Michael, me just need to make it clear that Michael carries out his duty following specifically our direction. Right? And Michael has not done any...
No, he's not done anything wrong. No, I'm just saying that...
Yeah. But he answers to us.
I will absolutely own everything that I am responsible for.
Yes. Very good.
That's when he's done anything wrong.
All right. Are we good?
I just would like to thank, through you, Council President, I would like to thank everybody for sitting here through this very long conversation.
All right. Let's entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second?
I'll second it.
Second.
Delia can have the first.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We're adjourned.